Good morning. We'll call to order the February 8th meeting of the Slene County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Pedrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wies.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Now if we'll all stand, please, for the flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
If we'll have Lauren give instructions on our participants and how to Zoom.
Hi. If anybody in the audience needs to answer, ask questions, go ahead and go down to the raise hand function at the bottom. We'll call on you. We'll have you unmute yourself and then ask you to mute yourself when you're done.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. We'll now move into the citizens' input where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes on items that are not on today's agenda, action agenda. Seeing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of funding of indigent care tuberculosis control program activities contract, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agendas presented. Any commissioners wish to address any of these?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number one, presentations.
City of Slana Housing Update with Lauren Driscoll, Director of Development Services.
Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning.
Good morning. You know it's a good meeting. We have two Lawrens in a meeting. We are in a very unique time right now, and I appreciate the opportunity to share some of these ideas with you. I've been here in the past to talk to you about housing and what we're trying to do to address our very increased need for housing related to the expansion of Great Plains, slash Kubota, Schwan's, and our other employers. In addition, over the last nine months, we've talked with other employers who said, look, we could also expand, or had conversations with other interested economic development parties who said, we're interested in coming to Slana, but until you have more housing, those are very difficult decisions for us to make. So housing has definitely been an issue. These unique times come with the fact that not only are we growing, but we have money that has come through the COVID process, mainly ARPA, that the state is trying to distribute, a little over $1.6 billion directly to Kansas. There's also some transportation funding out there through the feds and trying to look at all those different pieces. Both the city and the county have been having a lot of conversations because the economic well-being is not just a city issue, but it's a regional issue, and housing cannot be handled completely by the city. In fact, the housing study that we shared with you guys, our updated one a few months ago, actually identifies 60% of these new residents being absorbed into the county. At this time, I think something that we're learning is it's going to be hard to do that because really trying to get construction moving and going has been a challenge. In order to meet those challenges, we have four projects that we're looking at right now that we would like to move through some of these different financing buckets that are out there. Whether it's, there's a grant that came out a couple weeks ago called the Base Grant, the Spark process that you may be familiar with, that's where a lot of that ARPA money is being addressed, and then some smaller ones out there through KDOT and other methods. We have done a lot of communicating and sharing and talking the last few days with different project partners and seeking advice from elected officials, our employers, to make sure that the four projects that we would really try to like to get funded for housing are really our best priorities and how we could best package those. So those are the four that I have to go over with you today. I'm going to start with the biggie. That is the Dreever project. Dreever Partners came and spoke to you a little while back. They were the entity that came to us in, it was like June, July of last year, and said, hey, we're looking at doing more workforce housing. We've been doing this for 50 years, but we see the Midwest has a need. We like to take older hotels, convert those to micro units. We can get them for you fast, easy. What do you think? What that has developed into is them really getting to know our community and understanding our needs a lot better and saying, hey, 300, 400 units is really not enough for you guys. The Marietta Properties came up for auction this winter, somewhere around November, December, and they purchased 68 acres near Menards, in addition to having three properties secured along Crawford. So the project has gone from flipping a couple older hotels to 1,800 units of multifamily housing, three or four different product types, two different locations. So I'd like to walk you through that and kind of lay that project out. Next slide, please, or page. So what you're looking at is some leave material that we've put together. When you're doing projects like this and you have a lot of different partners, especially when you're talking to folks down in Topeka, it's nice to kind of have everything bundled and easy leave materials that they can kind of get to know the project, get to know you, and then get a breakdown of each project. So what Lauren's got up on the screen are a PDF of these materials that we've been working on. Each of them has kind of a general introduction to our community, our housing need, and how we got here. Next page, please. This next page highlights that what we're trying to accomplish is well-founded. Our updated housing plan has a 10-year schedule for how many units, at what type, and what price point that we need, broken out into two five-year blocks. So now to 2025 and 2025 to 2030. Below that are the kind of general overall goals that we need to accomplish to really meet our housing demands. And the key to this is, one, both recognizing that we needed market rate multifamily apartments and that the likelihood is we would need to identify incentives to fill the gap in those types of projects. And the other piece to that is building infrastructure that supports more housing development. It's kind of interesting when you see our community through other people's eyes. You know, they're amazed at how much land we have, fairly flat, but then not necessarily quite development-ready. You know, maybe water sewers a quarter of a mile off, and the roads aren't built up to standard. We've still got to do curb and gutter. We need to pave, those types of things. And what we've kind of been learning is any time that it's just not ready to go, time is money, and they are likely to move on to something else. So that's part of a challenge, and that's where that infrastructure link comes in. Definitely, as we talked about in the past, speed is of the essence. As you are well aware, many of the first employees for Schwan's and Great Plains will be here in the next 12 to 24 months. So we need to get this moving. Our five-year construction rate for residential construction has been about 41 units a year on average, and that's an up number thanks to 2021 already starting to pick up on residential construction. That means that we need to be going like eight times faster than we have in the past. So it is definitely time to get moving. Next slide. This is just a little bit about Dreever. I'm not going to go into great depth with you guys, but just a reminder that they've been doing multifamily housing, everything from luxury to senior to workforce for over 50 years. They're originally based out of San Francisco area, but have done projects all over the country and are currently doing projects in the Midwest, in the Branson area. Next slide. So here are the two sites that we've talked about. As I mentioned, there's the Penn Lay Gardens property, and that is off of Magnolia. And you can see it kind of wraps around the backside of Menards, kind of nestled between the creek and Menards. And then they're currently working to acquire the property where Magnolia Point was going to go. That was the Perry Reed project. There's a deed restriction. It's only on that particular lot that Menards has on the property that gives them kind of final decision on the use there. That is not a city issue. I have very, I have zero control, not even very little, zero control over that. So that is something negotiated between the buyer and Menards on meeting that deed restriction. But they are trying to secure that property in addition to put more units there. So all in all, if they picked up that front property and then the 68 acres to the back of Menards, we're looking at 1,300 new units there. And one of the unique things about this is this is multiple product types, too. A lot of times when we talk to a developer, they're like, oh, well, yeah, we're kind of interested in Slana. Here's what we do. This is how we do it. Do you want this? And it's like, that, it's just, that's the way they do it. And a lot of them don't do multiple things. A lot of them are like, we just do this style of garden apartment, or we just do kind of urban developments, or we just do cottages, not often a mix of all of them. And that's something when we talk to the employers, both Mitch from the EDO and Eric from the Chamber and I have talked to employers a lot, and one of the challenges is I need housing for my executives. I need housing for middle managers. I need housing for trainers, for international employees, for line workers. And so it's a lot of different needs and a lot of different price points and product types to meet. So the exciting thing about the Dreever project is getting those different pieces. You have 950 multifamily units in mainly garden-style apartments. So when you're, when you see, you know, a three-story apartment building, we typically call those garden-style apartments. 150 cottage homes and then 200 active adult 55 and older apartments. The 55 and older apartments, you may be wondering like, why, Lauren? I thought we needed workforce housing. The thing is, is we have folks that are underhoused right now. If you saw anything about the state's housing plan and our region, this is very consistent with having people who are in an owner-occupied home who may not want to be in that anymore. Their children are gone, they're single, whatever, and would like to go to a different type of product. It just doesn't exist here. So part of this product point of 200 units is possibly people may want to move to that, and that could free up other houses in town for new folks to purchase. That's an option, but Dreever's identified that that could be flexible. This, part of Dreever's goal has been to incorporate childcare in all of this. And working through this process, the YMCA has engaged in this conversation, said, hey, we could be a potential partner. And right now, that is really where the discussion's at. The site plan we're going to see here on the next slide, just one sec, has them here at the Penn Lay Gardens site kind of nestled in there. That could move somewhere in the development. That's just tentatively where it's at. It's a 30,000-square-foot facility that would have a wellness component, but primarily have the childcare component with childcare for 60 kids. All benefits, or all residents would benefit also from increased amenities. That's something that we're seeing consistently with all multifamily developers, and that's something that's kind of new to Slana, is, you know, multifamily means a pool. It means a barbecue area. It means pet park area. It's a lifestyle, and it's more than just your unit. It's all these other things that you're using and sharing in. So that would have trails, barbecue, pool, all those things that are high-end amenities in modern multifamily. The Penn Lay Commons project is on West Crawford. The Ambassador is what really brought everybody to the table, and it is still what's got everybody at the table. It is a blighted property. The owner is a fairly absentee owner, and they don't have an onsite property maintenance person. So every time there's a break-in, every time there's damage, you got to call that person. We got to get out there. And it just, it's easy pickings. We've had a break-in in the last couple of months where, you know, they've taken out a ton of copper piping and wiring for resale, and the building just gets more and more ripped up every week. And that's with, between PD and ARCA compliance, trying to stay on top of this thing. So it's a real challenge. It's completely boarded and fenced up right now, but it's still a challenge. This takes and bulldozes and demos the Ambassador. It's just not worth saving. Part of the hotel piece is the quick, you know, the quick flip of taking those units and getting new units available quickly. But with the amount of damage that's occurred in the building, on top of that, it was always a challenge to take that holodome kind of layout of that massive amount of unusable space and try to figure out how to efficiently heat and cool that and make more units and all those things. So at the end of the day, bulldozed. The value in is part of this project. It would stay and be converted to micro suites. Dreever's tentatively identified those for the universities. There are 62 units in there, and that could have, you know, shared study space, things like that. It's just both Kansas Wesleyan and K-State Slana said, you know, they've got married couples and seniors who just might not want to live on campus anymore or pursuing other programs. They thought this would be a good option for them. And then the Western Sizlin property is also part of this. The Western Sizlin building would come down, and so the whole thing would become garden apartments, primarily studios and what we call junior ones, which is a studio that's a slightly larger with like a half-wall kind of denoting the bedroom area. Next slide, please. So here's what the projects start to look like. At the top is the Menards project. You'll see the southern portion of that is anchored by that kind of square complex of garden-style apartments. Tentatively, right now, the Y is right there on the edge. It's got good highway visibility and some ball fields. But that's something that the Y board and Dreever are still talking about, so it might move slightly. But for sake of discussion in this draft, that's where it's at. There are the cottages coming up along the creek, and then that senior piece towards the north, there is a little commercial pad there behind the bank, and then more apartments in front of the hotel where that deed-restricted piece of property is. The lower piece shows the West Crawford property, again with those buildings showing the garden-style apartments and how those are laid out, trying to kind of get the max amount that you can on that. That's 500 units. So you've got the 1,300 over at Menards, and you've got the 500 over at West Crawford. So that's how you get to the 1,800. Next slide, please. So this is just highlighting, just for discussion's sake, with partners and folks in Topeka, is that this project is really not just another apartment complex. One, we're starting to address blight. I say this to Mike all the time. We either take care of the Ambassador now, or we'll take care of it later. I don't think it's going to take care of itself. So trying to address that and knowing that it's also a major commercial corridor for our community. In fact, we were talking to somebody new at Commerce the other day and describing where this project was, and he goes, oh, by the Brahms? Yep. Because he had stopped here enough times to get food at Brahms to know that spot on the highway. And it's, if it really kind of says, it is a gateway to our community, and people identify with that area. So being able to put these new units here and change this part of Crawford would be critical. It also helps to keep the reinvestment in North Slana that's happening. This is their most southern border, and it kind of jives with the positive work we've seen at the Dillons there, at Sunset Plaza, and the positive things that are happening down Broadway. This is also in a census tract that's LMI-qualified, so low to moderate income, which is helpful for Spark application. And as primarily commercial properties, we're not displacing anybody by taking these properties and converting them to housing. Next slide, please. So the childcare piece is pretty interesting in this. You have one, we really have two problems in the childcare situation. How do you get more spots for kids, and how do we get more childcare workers? And primarily, we have a hard time getting more workers because they're making $10, $11 an hour. They really need to be making 13, 14, even 15 an hour because that's what you can get at Target or Dillons or somewhere else. And so trying to make that competitive living wage is a challenge, plus making it someplace parents can afford to get into. So the Dreever project has brought a couple different options. One, as we talked about, the YMCA offering childcare slots for 60 kids from infant to school age, which is huge because we do have a lack of infant spots in town. We also, as we get into the finances of how the capital stack works, there's a component called preferred equity. So basically, the ask is that local employers, community leaders, or even foundations who'd like to do impact investing can invest in increments of a million. So for every million, you get a 3% rate of return over 10 years. You can also get a secured or a preferred number of units if that is something needed. So for instance, you're an employer. If you invest a million, you get that 3% over 10 years back for that million, plus 10 priority units. So if you've got five people in line to get an apartment, that employer's person goes to the front of the line to make sure that those are addressed. That 3%, whether you're an employer, leader, foundation, as it's coming back, you can make the option to take 1% of that 3 and donate it to a fund, a nonprofit fund, that would go back to helping supplement housing costs for childcare workers and para educators. When we talk to the school district, paras are also, in addition to childcare workers, one of our main kind of educational, early education employees that is just feeling that gap. And so the idea is by supplementing those housing costs, you're able to let somebody making, let's say, $11, $12 an hour, live the lifestyle of somebody making 14, 15. So you're getting that break. Next slide. We talked about the mix a little bit, 1,800 units, of course. What you're seeing here is conversations we've had with all the major employers. They have been kind enough to give us some very general, high-level data of what they think, well, knowing what their new employees were going to make, knowing what their existing employees make, and then looking at some of their historical data about kind of their family sizes. So from insurance, you can kind of see, we have this many singles. We have this many, you know, with partner. We have this many families. So it kind of gave us an idea, trying to understand how you needed to mix those units. So this is very reflective of that. The West Crawford property is very studio and junior one-centric. It's very urban, probably a lot of young professionals or folks who are just not home a lot or like to travel. It's a variety of different things, but there's a lot of shared common space in that kind of living style. We looked at some of these in Kansas City, and at first, especially when you're coming from, you know, a 1,700-square-foot house or, you know, even a 1,000-square-foot house, whatever, and you think, wow, 450 square feet or 500 square feet, that doesn't seem like a lot. But when you're in some of these complexes, there's a lot of other spaces, too. Outdoor spaces that are living spaces, porches. We went to one project where instead of having like, you know, the community building, they actually had like a group kitchen, and it was really beautiful done. High-end appliances, tons of counter space, huge dining table. And basically, as a resident, you could rent it for free. You just had to put a deposit down so it didn't get trashed. And if you wanted to have a dinner party, just come use our big dining room. So it might be hard to have that party in your apartment or your studio, but that was still an option. You know, you want to throw Thanksgiving for your friends? Here's an option. You know, pool tables, all kinds of different spaces. So it's definitely a different way of living. But it is one we don't have here, but I think if we had the product, it would get used. The below table identifies what those target rents are. These rents are based off of our housing plan and also trying to kind of get to a price point that is reflective of modern, you know, labor and material costs, but still trying to adjust that and address the gap issue. So micro studios are starting at 750, going up from there. Next slide, please. So overall project cost, this is a pretty big number, 315 million. So you can see from the table, there's a breakdown by the Crawford properties and by the Magnolia properties. And then together, combined, that's how we get to the 315. This does include the YMCA at 10 million. So you've got the building of all the dwelling units and the YMCA in there. So that comes out to about 175,000 per unit is that cost. And that's where on that last table, when we saw like rent without subsidies, that's where we're looking at 950, and those higher numbers is trying to take these per-unit costs and match those to a rent is where we get that gap. Next slide. So in order to get 300 or 1,800 units built, it is a group effort. And it really has been that from the beginning of talking with our different stakeholders and working together. And that's one of the things that the states identified about Slana, is that we have taken a whole community approach to this. So as I mentioned, 315 million or 175,000 a unit, government support and cost mitigation. Right now, the project already assumes that property tax will be abated on an IRB-type situation, 10 years, 100%. We are working, without a cost-benefit analysis, which is something we typically run for an IRB, and I don't have one yet. We're getting one run right now. And I'll share those numbers, of course, with Phil and, of course, our commission as soon as we get those. as soon as we get those. Back-of-the-napkin math is about 5 million a year, but that includes county, city, airport authority, extension, all those different taxing entities. So I want to do a breakdown of that further. But that is assumed already, just so as you're looking at these numbers. So in addition, the project is asking for sales tax relief, which typically comes in the form of an IRB, and that's estimated at $10 million. Integrated construction, permanent mortgage. So typically, on a project, where your risk lies is during construction. And that risk comes at a cost, which is a higher interest rate. And then the project becomes more affordable when it moves into that permanent mortgage stage. What Dreever is asking for is either, you know, a bank or a group of banks to take on that risk together through that integrated construction, permanent mortgage, or for a guarantee. And this is done in some states where the state basically guarantees the mortgage. Then there is the last piece, which is the cash piece, and that's what we're really asking the state for the most help on. And right now, if we assume sales tax and the lowered interest rate, our ask is going to be, ask is going to be 50 million. If the construction, mortgage, interest rate cannot be lowered, the ask becomes 65 million. So there's, of course, $15 million difference. The city has identified, and I'm looking at my boss, just to make sure I'm getting this right. So the city has 2 million identified of our ARPA COVID dollars set aside for housing. One was meant for greenfield, the other meant for more infill. Tentative, what we've put on the table, which of course isn't real until our body makes a decision, is a million. If we were to take our kind of more greenfield, this doesn't fit into any of those buckets, but if we took a million of our two set aside for housing, that could be cash we could put towards this. We've asked Phil what the county might be able to contribute or could consider.
So as the commission will remember, we also set aside 2.5 million of our ARPA funding toward housing. The first million is spoken for with Southview Estates and that facilitation of the water and wastewater infrastructure out there in that RHID. That leaves us about a million and a half. And so I have been out on a limb a little bit, talking with Lauren about the potential of 1 million of that going toward this project as a potential where we could match state dollars. Not that we would contribute a million, but if the state plays and we need community match, we could potentially come in with levels similar to the city. Obviously, that is something that the five of you would need to vote for at some point. But just so you know, that's kind of the, what we've been talking about. And then we'd still have another 500,000 for another housing project, so.
Tentatively, right now, I tend to think at the 65 million number, because the part that we have the least control over is that interest rate piece. I don't, that's, it's not something I've seen Kansas do before. We are asking Commerce that question, and of course, I don't have control over the banks. So for me, right now, I kind of play with the $65 million number, but we're prepared to kind of roll through that however that works. So if we identify match of 2 million from our local government entities, then, for instance, at the 50 million rate, we are asking for 48 million. Or at the 65 million rate, we are asking for 63 million. I think I got that math right. So that is, that is the big ask, and that's what we're trying to kind of figure out, if this is a Spark project, or do, you know, do we go for infrastructure dollars over here? How does that work? I want to touch on the private capital, too, because this is not all government support. There is, of course, a mortgage. There's the preferred equity component. That is 60 million. And what we're hoping to do, and the employers are not going to be surprised about this ask, they are aware of it, how much they are going to support this, and if they take action, I don't know. But one of the things that makes this project feasible is the preferred equity component that I talked about, and that's that for every million, 3% rate of return, 10 years. And then the ability to have prioritized units and the ability to give back to that childcare, early education, housing fund. Then private investment is at 20 million or 8%. And then the Dreever team and their initial capital is 2% at 4 million. I will also note, too, that Hutton Construction is under contract with Dreever. They designed the new master plans and are working through a design-build, not to exceed contract right now with them. So that does have a local component. Dreever still has their own construction team. Steve McCoy is good at what he does. But wanting to have people local who knew our community was critical. And Dreever and Hutton have identified, if they're able to get funding in a reasonable time, they could get construction of all 1,800 units done in under three years. That's what I'm talking about, because we need these units and we need them fast. And that's, that's, that power of time and mass of units has been very critical. And this is one of the only projects we've seen that's delivered on those two priorities. And then our third priority, we have a mix of unit types and price points. Next slide, please. This last page just kind of summarizes that, both in the, that cash component that includes, you know, sales tax abatement, secured interest rate, and then the local and state government cash infusion. Replacing the expensive preferred, or, sorry, replacing expensive private equity investment with that preferred equity. So for instance, if you're going to a capital management firm and asking for investors, they're probably looking at, you know, upwards of 10, 12% interest rate on that money borrowed. If we do local reinvestment, preferred equity at 3%, that's a much more affordable way to fund the project. We have that local investment. It also starts to lower risk, which looks at other interest rates and makes the project more feasible. That's part of how that capital stack is built. We mentioned that single interest rate for the whole project, sales tax exemption, property tax exemption, and then the YMCA component. And as always with any type of ask, we have the why. You know, if you fund this, what do you get? And that's 1,800 units, timely manner, supports our housing plan, supports our childcare and childcare workers, and completed in a timely manner. I think that's it. That's, that's the biggie. I promise the other presentations are shorter, but there's, there's a lot in this one.
Okay, Lauren, before we go to the others, we'll discuss this one and converse. Any commissioners have questions or comments they would like to share?
Just a quick question is, on the 1,800 units that we're looking at, is that, is that number's been around for a while that I remember listening to prior to? So is the 1,800 units take into effect part of the, that's RHID housing that we've got going on right now?
The 1,800 is what Dreever's going to build. So that, I guess, when you say take into effect, like, if I take our housing program and I subtract the RHID, like, how many does that remove from our? Well, our RHID housing is owner-occupied, so we tend to look at those differently in the housing plan. That owner-occupied, there's a certain person who wants to own, and then there's a certain person who's going to want to rent. So when I look at the housing program, the RHID projects only take away from the owner-occupied side, where the Dreever project really gets to the rental side of things.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's going to be, if, if, if we get this fully funded, it will be the first rental across the line since adopting the housing policy. Because Magnolia Point did not go forward based on that deed restriction. And as I said, deed restriction, none of us have control over that, and that's only on that one parcel. The other 68 acres where, you know, over 1,000 units are at, are already purchased, and Dreever has control on those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Beyond the $2.5 million that we've got to invest, we've already invested a million. This project has earmarked a million. Beyond that, I assume that the county's role in this would also be approving a tax
So this project is IRB. So typically, those IRBs do not come to the county. The city approves those, but it abates the taxes. So our role is not necessarily approving it, it's just knowing that that's a contribution that's a little different than the RHID process, where we have to actually engage in that.
And that's what I'm trying to get to, to cut to the chase, is what is our role? And it is financial. And these are funds that have been given to the county through the federal government, through the COVID relief, and all those types of things. Am I, am I stating that correctly?
You are, Commissioner. And so I think what's important to understand is that, as Lauren mentioned, there is a cash component to this, and that's the 1 million. And then there's the tax exemption piece of that. And that's basically foregoing future taxes, which, you know, right now, that's an ag piece of land, very low tax rate. This would obviously be taxed at a much higher rate at once it's developed. Again, the IRB piece is only a 10-year, as opposed to the RHID, which is a 25-year. But yes, that, the, the county would play both on the cash side and on the tax exemption side.
A concern for me down the road, and don't get me wrong, I'm for this, I'm, I'm backing it all the way. But when we get beyond this and we get into this 10-year, that the city approves the tax abatement, our community begins to grow, our infrastructure needs help, and we need to fund city government and county government to a higher level. Where does that come from? Comes from the same people that are here in the first place. So our taxes are going to go up. There's no question about that, I think. So that's, that's just my concern. I'm not going to stand in the way of it. That's my concern, but.
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point. The only sort of ameliorating factor that I would point to is having more people and more commerce also helps us on the sales tax side as well. As you know, Salina's a major commercial hub. So that certainly helps the city a little more than the county, because we don't get quite as much on the sales tax side. But, but it would, it would help alleviate the property tax burden over time.
And I think that both, particularly the Menards parcels, are vacant. So right now, they're either being taxed as ag, or I can't remember what the other level is, where it's usable and ready but not being used for ag. But neither of them are being at their highest and best use. So developing those, definitely in that following 10 years, you'd see an increased value versus, you know, taking something that's already an existing taxable property. This is some, it will be a significant difference in the future.
Lauren, you're talking 1,800 units. Can you put that into a population? Are you looking at two per unit average or three? Have you, do you have an idea of, of numbers of?
I'd have to do a little back-of-the-napkin kind of math. But typically, in a, in a studio or a junior one, you're going to see singles and doubles. When we get to one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, those kind of progress in a similar manner. One bedroom, you'll typically see one or two people, sometimes three, depending on how somebody wants to slice the rent. And then two bedrooms, two and up, three bedrooms, three and up.
It's safe to say, you could, you could say it'd be at least a two-person-per-unit growth. You're talking 3,600 population at minimum, I would assume.
I think I'd want to probably go back to that table and, and kind of play with those a little bit, but, because I don't know if all of them are going to average two. I don't know. We can assume that for the moment, yeah, possibly. It's going to be a lot of people.
Going back to Commissioner Vidrickson's.
About that, a lot.
Vidrickson's comments that you're going to, and it's great to have growth. It's great to have population growth, that more people buying and, and sales tax grow. But there's also more people that are relying on our health department, relying on our senior center, relying, unfortunately, on our jail, which comes at a cost to the county and such. This property tax exemption, you've got 10 to 20 here. Do you have a firm? Is it 10?
It's 10. We've told them 10. You can't get property tax exemption in the form of an IRB past 10 years in the state of Kansas.
Okay, so that.
So we've told them. Yeah, they know. We, and these are draft documents. I mean, working through with the developer and trying to kind of go around these numbers with the Spark Committee, putting its deadline out as of, you know, roughly last week, and some of these other programs, we've started pulling all this together. So in the last, I don't know, five days, we've been doing a lot of hustling between the developer and us to get finalized numbers. So I will definitely amend that from here on out, not to say, I mean, 20 is their desirable, but they know 10 is all you can get. I mean, literally by law in Kansas.
But the Ohio Schilling project was a different animal.
Correct.
Which allowed them to go 25 years out. Which leads me to the question for the administrator. With the Ohio Schilling project, we were able to utilize COVID dollars, and it put us into a little different deal as far as property taxes and such. Were we, were we able to get that money back over a period of time or a portion of that money back? That's not an option with this?
So the structure of this is different. I don't know that it wouldn't be an option, but this, this is structured a little differently. So I think we would have to have further conversations with the city. One of the critical things, though, is the ask to the state. And the state really wants a local community match, right? And so that typically would be in the form of a check that we write, rather than a 10-year payback sort of scenario. So we do have other funding in the ARPA framework that's not spoken for yet. So it might be possible to do what you're suggesting, but I would say that would be sort of above the first million. Like, that first million would just be a check that we write to match state funding. And then we might take another half a million above that and look at doing some sort of a payback scenario like you're suggesting.
And that's something we worked through kind of as we went through that RHID process. I mean, we would work through it again if that was the desire of the body.
Well, it goes without saying that if the sales tax does increase, the good thing would be our jail would be paid off just a little quicker. But more questions from the commission?
Yeah, quick question here, is that these costs that are actually in this sheet here, does any of this take into consideration of the cost that the city will have to incur to redo the roads? I mean, I mean, because, I mean, here, and, well, I mean, the, the water, the sewers, and everything else that's going to be here. I mean, does any of that end to any of this? Or is that all up and above that the city will have to provide?
Well, that's actually one of the four projects to talk about, is road improvements on Magnolia, particularly related to just upgrading that road. And it's, and it's not just these projects. There's, there's another housing project, there's K-State's campus improvements and a variety of other things. So we are looking at some of that infrastructure piece. And yeah, there's infrastructure related to homes, roads. We have, out of the four projects, two of them are actual brick-and-mortar houses or housing, and two of them are infrastructure projects to support what we're talking about here. And then some of it is just the same thing that you guys are doing, just looking at that increased sales tax, you know, overall increased property values from these new developments, and that's starting to hit the city's bottom line. And then just, you know, how you budget through managing a bigger, growing city. So.
Yeah, and that's why, I'm sitting here looking at all this here, and, and this, and I'm going, wow. I mean, is there, is there natural gas available? Is there city water sewer in, in all these development areas that?
Yes.
There's not any, because I see all the new gas lines going up here on the Magnolia Homes Road area, and, and I just, but.
So the answer definitely is yes. As part of the housing study, we did a cluster map and basically identified 25 acres. and basically identified 25 acre and larger parcels that could be developed for housing. And that they had certain criteria, like had to be in less than a quarter of a mile from certain utilities, needed to have a perimeter road within this distance. So we used those mapping efforts to kind of identify if we had to pick kind of the biggest bang for our buck as far as infrastructure investment went to be able to get more sustainable kind of market natural movement of housing. So, I mean, that's kind of the end game too, is we're in a position of kind of jump-starting a lot of this, but the goal is not to have to do this forever. It's to get it going. Mike says it a lot, is get the log jam broken in our market so that it does its own thing. So it might be a perfect transition, if you're okay with it, to talk about some of the infrastructure projects, because I think they get to the other piece of this.
One last question. This is not something the county, is this like the last project? We don't approve it, we just don't protest it?
Well, again, two components. So on the IRB, we sort of have no say, right? If, we certainly could appear at the city's meeting and, and, you know, object to it. But we don't, it doesn't actually come before your body. But any sort of cash contribution or that, you know, in lieu of development contribution, those would come back to the five-v-four approval.
Thank you.
If I could add to that just a little bit. Lauren mentioned that I think we're being received by the Spark Committee and those in Topeka as being a community that has a collective vision. And that's really helping us. And even though you may not have a formal veto role in IRBs in particular, we definitely want to go forward as a commission. I hope you're seeing that, I mean, this has been a collaborative effort with city staff, county staff, the airport authority, the EDO, the chamber. This is a community vision and, you know, we, we want to, if at all possible, want to be on the same page and be, everyone be equally informed and bought in.
I understand it. I was just wanting the logistics of how it worked.
Well, and frankly, no one needs to make any decisions until we find out if we get money to fund all these pieces. So, but I think collectively, we wanted to make sure our bodies were well-informed and kind of generally agreed these were our best priorities to move forward with, to try and fund before we have to make those decisions. Let's see, which one we got?
So Lauren H., if you want to bring up the next one?
So Lauren, if you want to scroll, I can, the first couple of pages are generally going to be the same. Yeah, so this is, wait, wait, one back. So this is the other actual like housing creation or unit development. A developer named Flaherty and Collins, they're out of the Kansas City, Missouri area, was introduced to us by Department of Commerce. And Commerce has heard loud and clear that housing is an issue in economic development for Kansas. And certain communities were highlighted. That would be Topeka, Wichita, Salina and Kansas City, Kansas. And Commerce said, hey, Flaherty and Collins, let us introduce you to these communities. We'd like you to figure out what it would take for you to do a project there. And so Flaherty and Collins has been here, looked at a variety of sites, met with our team. We also have had a chance to look at some of their properties. Next slide, please. It's okay. So they are proposing 220 units of multifamily off of Ohio. And these would also be garden-style apartments ranging in studios, ones and twos. They would have amenities equal to what Dreever is offering. As I mentioned, that's kind of a modern standard for development. One of the things I appreciate both about Flaherty and Collins and with Dreever is both build very high quality. We have to live with these units in the long run, and our community wants to use them in the long run. So knowing you've got quality developers is, is always an important part of this. And both track records are good. If you'll go next slide. This is a breakdown of a simple pro forma for this project. As you see, total overall cost for the project is a little over 44 million. And they have also assumed IRBs and then are asking for state or local government contribution for that gap in the form of direct funds. And that's in at $18 million. Similar to what we talked about with the Dreever project, that their direct cash ask by number of units is about 27,000-ish per unit. This ask is closer to 81,000 per unit. So there is, there is a slight difference. And it's a good example of, not to kind of pick on one versus the other, but an example of what happens when you get into scale when dealing with multifamily and how you can address some of these things. So the ask for this is 18 million and would get us 220 new units within three years. So very similar, similar time scale. It also puts those units on an opposite side of town than the Dreever project. So Dreever is pretty much on that west side, both at Crawford and Magnolia. And this would be a contribution to the east side off of Ohio. And this is a product type and a product price point that our housing plan identifies as a need for the community. Okay, we can keep rolling, other Lauren? So these are the two infrastructure projects. The first is Magnolia. As I mentioned, this is that one-mile strip that comes from the highway to Centennial Road. So it's running right past Virginia Drive, Menards. And in that one mile, you've got some challenges though. We've got steep slopes, we're only at two lanes. We've got the railroad crossing, we've got culvert bridge issues, all kinds of goodness going on there, which makes it expensive. But it's a highly-used piece. I think five years ago, the state and the city, through working with KDOT, recognized as a road that would need improvements. I think, I'm probably going to get this wrong, but I think the city took the road, what, two years ago, 2019? By way of agreement. And we now maintain that. I think everybody just seems in general recognition, whether we're talking about semi-trucks and things getting to Schwan's and to the airport, we're talking about new students trying to get to K-State, or we're talking about all these new houses. There's a general need to improve this section of road. Next slide. Next slide. This looks familiar, it should. We kind of went over these, next slide. So this just kind of gives you an aerial visual. As you can see, that one mile just boom runs right into K-State-Salina. So there's definitely an impact. The university has identified that they are going to be investing over the next five to 10 years, $85 million of campus improvements. So that's increasing enrollment, bringing new research and things like that. So the gateway to the university and the gateway to that level of investment is something we need to be thinking about as a region. Again, Magnolia is very highly-used for the airport, One Vision. We've got Tony's Pizza over there or, so we have a lot of jobs and a lot of traffic on that section. The new housing we talked about, we know the Dreever numbers. But then also, we have another potential RHID project. To try and understand this, I did put it there even though it's potential and nobody's acted on it, I want to be clear about that. But if both those projects went forward, we're looking at 12,000-plus new car trips a day. So again, that road is going to get awfully busy. Let's see, we'll go next slide. We actually had an out-of-house engineering firm do some preliminary numbers for us to make sure that our ask was on the, on the right track. Next slide, please. And that $10.5 million ask to upgrade that road will get you that full mile with medians and turn lanes, three lane. And you're going to get 10-foot hike bike on the south side and a five-foot sidewalk on the north side, which is critical for that connectivity. I've heard that both from citizens, from our elected body. You know, if you've got students and workers over here, how do you get them across the highway to where we have more commercial uses? You're going to get street lighting, landscaping, public art, bridges, culvert replacement, channel realignment, and of course, addressing the railroad crossing there. This is definitely one of those projects that infrastructure has money out there and this has a commerce component. If we can tie in highways and we can tie in semi-trucks, there's usually money to be found, but you still have to get this stuff together. So we're looking and talking with KDOT, we're looking at the base grant, we're looking at pretty much every funding source out there to try and fund this one-mile section. But I wanted to let you guys know that it has a very strong connection to housing and it's one of the projects we're pitching right now under the housing umbrella. Next slide. Homes Road. So this is the other infrastructure project. And this is, if we keep clicking. One more there. This is that cluster map I was talking about. And this particular project is very, very housing-centric. And it's hard, it's a hard project to sell in a typical infrastructure reinvestment kind of component. Because like I said, state and federal dollars typically kind of when it comes to road and utilities are all about commerce. You're connected to something multimodal, right? Train, plane or highway, and you've got the movement of goods. This is a purely residential road. Homes is going to be a lot of homes. And so it's a hard road to fund. But if you see that map and you're looking for where the, the most significant cluster of developable properties are at, it's right along there. And our comprehensive plan identifies that our residential growth could go out east like that. One of the other issues that this particular project addresses is affordability. As I'm sure you're aware, when you do special assessments on a home, we're typically adding $30,000. So if you've got a 200 or $250,000 home, we're putting that 30 on top of that price tag. And then when we get into things like benefit districts for larger infrastructure, like perimeter roads needing to be improved, we can easily add 10,000 to 20,000 on top of that. So we've taken what was affordable workforce housing and now made that unaffordable. And so that's definitely part of the challenge here. And then I mentioned earlier is having properties that are development-ready. If a developer is going to come do 50, 100 houses, whatever, the, the effort, the time, the money of just getting the utilities there is usually not something they're willing to do. Or it affects the overall project's feasibility. Next slide. So Homes Road, we're looking at a three-mile stretch. This is all going all the way from Country Club down to Magnolia. And within that stretch, by upgrading the road, and we went to full curb and gutter, there's a standard below that, but as far as project ask, we thought we'd, well, ask for the highest level, knowing that we see long-term full build-out here. So we're asking for full curb and gutter and then full water and sewer being brought along the road so that developments are able to kind of tap in and develop from there. They would still need to take on specials or something like that, but that, this would definitely solve the perimeter road issue and increase the desirability and the timeliness of development here. So all in all, that would open up over 1,200 acres of potential developable land. This, as I mentioned, is a hard project to fund. So it's definitely one of them that we're going after with some of these Spark dollars and things like that and trying to find a way to do that. Because this definitely gets to, I, I think we could supply ourselves with 10 to 15 years easy of lots for development. We already have, how do I got two, at least two subdivisions towards the south end of that by Magnolia that are currently developing and could keep developing. They have established plats if the road was upgraded. And the intersection of Crawford and Homes alone opens over 700, I think it's like 788 acres of property. Out of the four properties right there touching the corner, three of them have expressed interest in developing. So there's interest and already established residential growth in this area. So it is, it's kind of, it's the, it's the balance piece, right? To a Dreever-type property where it's a lot of multifamily and gets to our five-year goals, this type of project really starts to get into that second five years, 2025 to 2030, where we're building more owner-occupied and, and we're increasing long-term residency. Next slide. This is a breakdown of design and construction for the road. And if you'll go next slide. And then this is a breakdown of water and sewer. So all in all, if you take water and sewer at 5.6 and then you take the road at 5.2, we end up with a total ask of 10.8 million. And as I mentioned, that will get us over 1,200 acres of developable land, being development-ready, probably a good 10 to 15-year supply of development-ready land for housing. And that's not restricted to single-family residential only. I mean, you could have multifamily out there as well. Okay, that's all four.
Lauren, I missed something here. And when I see, look at your 5.2 million dollars over on the, the numbers part of it. And on the next page, it says the ask is 10.8 million. Where's the extra five?
So if you look right above the ask, there's that box.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see now.
Water, sewer, yep.
For water and sewer. So it's not just the building of a road, it's the infrastructure that goes with it.
Yeah, because sewer is way out to the east. And, and you just need to get it closer. I mean, we're able to get there. And water, you need, you need to do a full main through there. And I think that's kind of the, one of the challenges in that area too, is there's just enough elevation issues that if you're also able to design it upfront, wholly and completely, we could also design something that's easier to maintain, more cost-efficient, because we're not having to do this piecemeal with development-by-development kind of thing as well.
I'm trying to think how to do this incrementally, but there is no way to do that. That's not smart. That just didn't, you know, save money here and cost you a lot of money on the back end.
Martha's office is next to mine. We've played with this map quite a bit. There's, there's not an easy way to do this. And we've taken even some of these parcels. And it's like just trying to design for that one parcel and it just, it doesn't make sense.
I get it. Just get it done. Yeah.
On the last two, the Magnolia Road and Homes Road, it's great information. Can you expand any on county's role in both of these? What you would like to see that to be?
I think we're kind of in a cheerleader kind of position on these. There's not a specific ask. Certainly, I think that if the city needed some match, they might come to us and, and look to us to see if we were able to contribute some match funding. But they're trying a bunch of different avenues on these two projects. So they don't know exactly, I think, how we'll play into this at this point.
I would like to add, I don't have any formal materials yet. I got some the other day, but wasn't able to get them projected. But K-State and Kansas Wesleyan are both partners in this conversation about housing. How that kind of all works out and, and they're kind of going down the same kind of funding path that we are trying to fund that. But Kansas Wesleyan has identified, they own some proper, or some homes near their campus that they're interested in demoing and putting some tiny houses through there. I think it would be housing for about 150 students. And that would become part of their campus. And what they've pointed out, and from a staffing perspective, I know this firsthand, if they're able to bring 150 students into that space, even if half of them come from existing rentals in town, that starts to free up rentals very quickly for other people coming to the community. So that's a helpful piece there. And then K-State-Salina is looking at a, a long-term vision. They've got funding for their first piece, which is a traditional kind of freshman year dormitory. And I believe that gets to 100 students. And then they're looking, their next phase is the second building. I think that gets closer to 200. And that's got apartments and things like that. But all in all, I think they're trying to get 300 students moved on to their campus over time. So anything funding-wise that we can find, you know, they're, they're pretty shovel-ready. So the, if they're able to find funding or we're able to kind of cheerlead or support them in funding asks, it really does get to our immediate need of trying to get housing available.
And I will say on that, Lauren has referenced the state Spark process and the base grants. And there are, there's a limit of how many base grants each entity can apply for. So the city can only, you've, you've heard about four projects. The city can only submit three of them for base. So I did have a conversation with Dr. Starkey at K-State-Salina about, well, you know, maybe the county could serve as the entity to get some of these things into the, the state Spark pipeline. Not that we would necessarily contribute money, but we might be, you know, the entity that made the ask on their behalf. So that's still to come, be presented to you all. But that, the timeline is relatively short on those, so.
Well, one that I, the Magnolia Road one is a challenge. Well, one that I, the Magnolia Road one is a challenge. I mean, just last week, we had citizens here that were, you know, saying, hey, you need to do something about this road. And as you know, I mean, the, that was part of the lawsuit between the city and the county. And I believe that we've handed that off to the city. And in that response from the courts, irregardless of what happens, I think that stretch of road, that mile there, needs to be really looked at hardly. I don't know if the Airport Authority or Kansas State or Schwan's, One Aviation, I don't know if they can be drawn into that or not financially. But that's certainly one that needs to be done, whether we get state money or not. That's a big deal, I think. And it's a gateway, it's one of those gateways.
Mm-hmm. Yep, we are definitely looking at different funding sources and talking with all of our available partners, for sure. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you for a comprehensive review here, for sure. A sales job, I might add.
Thanks. Well, it's, it's been a real team effort. I've worked for a few different municipalities and I, everybody's come to the table, had good discussion. And I think these four projects will make a really big difference if we can get these funded, so.
Well, I appreciate, as one commissioner, I appreciate the way that the city has handled this, come to us, you know, and the years passed, commissions passed. It's been a bumpy road between the two entities. And I don't feel it's, that road has been smoothed out pretty well. So thank you and the staff from the city for helping with that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, we'll move into action items. Item number one.
RFA 107-22, pre-trial remodel with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Welcome back, Annie.
So I think procedurally.
Do we do that first?
Probably need to untable this before we hear from Annie.
All right. Anyone want to hit on the part number one?
Well, let's see, I've lost it. Can I just untable it? Is that the problem? I mean, I've.
Yeah, if you want to just move to take RFA 107-22 off the table.
I've got so many papers I've lost.
Mr. Chairman, I move we untable RFA number 107-22 for discussion and possible action.
Second.
All right, so we're moving to second. We'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. RFA's untabled. Okay, now, Annie. Sorry, I had to do some business there before.
Yeah, I got that. I'm not a business person, apparently. You know, what I mean by that was not.
We know.
Oh. Good morning. I'm back here, as you mentioned, from last week, adding pieces and sharing a little more information that I neglected to share last time. So if you look at the remodeling space, it's $81,665 to do the whole remodel. In the new supplemental RFA, we broke out all the monthly increases and the options we saw available to us. In addition, we told you that we are using 300 and, or 703 square feet space. And we did attach the office diagram and the shaded area is the new remodeled area. So I've obviously picked it up a little bit here. There are four options laid out for you in the first table. Of course, the alternatives offers a fifth alternative. Option one is landlord pays nothing. Community Corrections pays the entire 81,665. The rent increase per month would go to the amount of $249, which results in $11,574 until July of '23. And then it goes up to $13,62 after that date. Option two, landlord pays $31,665. That would be Community Corrections paying the $50,000. The rent increase will be $705. The rent would go from up to 12,25 per month until the 23rd, the year of '23, July. And then it would go up to 13,513. Option three, landlord pays $51,665 with Community Corrections paying the $30,000. Rent increase would be $1,049. That would result in 12,374 per month until July of '23. And then 13,862 after. And the final option, landlord pays it all in the amount of $81,665. Community Corrections pays nothing. That increases the rent to, by $1,549, bringing it to 12,874 per month until July of '23. Then it goes up to 14,362. So this is not coming from general budget or, well, not coming from the county's general budget at all. But this is not coming from Community Corrections' general budget. This would come from our line item of reimbursement, which I've explained that many times how that works. We are allowed to tap into that as long as we show how we do that with commission approval. And so that's what we're seeking. We're recommending that you approve Community Corrections to pay the full expenditure of $81,665. But of course, under the alternatives, there is that alternative. There's the alternative, Community Corrections paying $50,000, $30,000, landlord paying it all, and then deny the request altogether. So I still stand by, and I changed it, thanks to Commissioner Vidrickson bringing up points that I considered and didn't know how they would go over. But after much discussion last week, I certainly support us paying, Community Corrections paying the $81,665. And then Commissioner Sparks brought up another point that's already been discussed with the county administrator myself in that we would ask ARPA funds to reimburse that amount of construction. Plus, I would add in there about $9,000 we're gonna spend right now out of the reimbursement dollars to furniture, cubicle spaces in that area. And that's what we're looking at right now. That is not on this, because this is only the remodeling, because I'm talking only about taking the money out. I'm just following up with a question Commissioner Sparks asked last week in that would ARPA funds be applicable to that? I'm understanding they probably are. And also that furniture, cubicle pieces could also be added to that request.
Okay, Annie, something that raises my eyebrows is the increase of rental costs in 2023. Is that because of the contract that's written?
Correct.
And if no action is, if nothing is done, if it's denied, are you still looking at a rental increase in 2023?
Yes, so if you go to option four, where we don't spend any of that money and the landlord's responsible for it all.
No, I'm saying if we don't do the project, are you still looking at a?
Oh, yes. There will be a slight increase. I can't remember what exactly it would be, but there is still a slight increase based on the contract. And I would have, I don't have that contract with me.
Okay, so next year, you're gonna have a, if you, if Community Correction pays it all, you're going to have a $1,500 rent increase a month?
Yes, if we pay, did you say, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you say if we pay for it all?
Yes.
Yes.
And if the project is?
That does include the contract, but it also includes a new space. Now, if we went with no new space, but I can tell you it's already almost done. I just want to say that to you honestly. If you told me that we shouldn't do that, we'd be in a world of hurt, because.
Shame on you.
I mean, I think you might be moving over to that area.
No, I'm just wondering if, had this not taken place.
Right.
You're still looking at 11, 12, $100 a month?
A certain amount. I would have to go back and look at the contract numbers and plus with the new space of, per month, $249. I would have to go look at that and break that all down.
Right.
We're just giving you exactly what we know it will be in the numbers.
Annie, the July 2023 lease, is that the, does the lease go beyond that?
Yes, oh, yes.
An increase that was built in on the initial price?
Correct.
When does this lease run out?
You know, Commissioner, I apologize, too. I don't know exactly when it runs out. I want to say it may go on, and I may be stretching it, but I think it's a good 25, 30 years. It's a large amount of time.
I don't remember it as being that much, but it could be. I wouldn't.
I would have to, I can pull that contract and certainly get that information to you again. That's not a problem. I do, I mean, we have, I have it on my desk, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm gonna pull a 180 on you here. And after reviewing all of this, looking at it, the funds that we're taking this from, what's it called, the?
The reimbursement line item.
Reimbursement funds.
Mm-hmm.
What happens, and I'll play the devil's advocate here. What happens one of these years when the state says, you know, we're having a tough time right now and we're not gonna give Community Corrections in Sling County their money this year? What?
By statute, they're not allowed. That would take in a complete legislative action. Legislators would have to determine that Community Corrections is no longer feasible to the state of Kansas. And they would have to go in and remove that out of statute. By statute, DOC must fund a portion. They do not fund enough, obviously, as you see, I write many other grants. But they would have to fund a portion. And in our, in our instances, it's about, almost a million dollars they give us for adults. And it's about 700,000 for juveniles. So they would really have to, and that's at flat funding, no increases over the last 10 years. So they would really have to do a serious legislative action. And in my opinion, after being here 35 years and watching legislative action, it would take years to get that passed.
So right now, we have approximately $450,000 in that fund.
A little over 5,000 right now.
500,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. 500,000, I'm sorry.
And at, and at this current rate, 14, that's 100 and, so we're looking at around rent for annual of around $160,000 after 2023. So really, we've got enough in there to fund us for three years, just the rent, if we wanted to go that way. And, and I'm not picking on this one way or another. I'm just trying to make us aware that if the state cuts funding, maybe, maybe we're better off keeping that money in there. I'm the one that raised, why are we not spending it? Now all of a sudden, I'm saying, maybe we shouldn't spend it.
Well, what I would hope is that you would seriously consider our ARPA request and reimburse us back.
No question, but that's an unknown at this time.
Right, but it fits definitely into that one-time expenditure. And, and I have to say, and I'm not, you know, blowing up Phil, but he really gave myself and another provider a very detailed presentation on how that works. And I've changed my thoughts on one entity. And I'm seeing that at this one-time expense into those criminal justice things and address reducing populations in prison, it fits, or jail, it fits that need. So sure, I'm hanging my hat on the fact that ARPA will be, funds will be approved. And I know that's not a given, any more than DOC remaining, stop funding us flat-funded. But I think that to say DOC would ever stop, we're the fifth largest, almost the fourth largest program in the state of Kansas. I think there would be significant hardship, would have to be there. I just don't see it. But I'm not, I get playing devil's advocate.
Number one, Phil, how, what could we expect on an, on an answer on the ARPA funds? Whether we could use them or not? And if we can, how much? Are those even numbers that are available?
Well, you all are the ultimate arbiters of that question. There's, there's some pieces that I need to work through with our consultants because capital projects are treated slightly differently than, than other types of expenditures. And so there's just some questions to be resolved. But I, I don't see any problem. I mean, if what we're talking about here is $90,000, based on Annie saying 81 and change for the space and around 9,000 for furniture. In our allocation, we have, I'm sorry, our framework, we have 250,000 allocated for criminal justice. So you all would, you know, need to make a decision of, okay, we believe that 90 out of that 250 ought to go for this project, right? So we would, I would want to, I would want to bring that back in context so that you have other projects, you know, to see what you're, you know, what may be competing for those dollars. But that's, that's really a commission decision, whether you reimburse Community Corrections from the ARPA funds or not.
A week ago, I was certainly in favor of spending $81,000, you know, right out of this fund. And I'm just, now I'm not certain what I'm supposed to do. I really am not. I'm vacillating between option one, option four, and option two, you know? Can we use a part of it? And that would then bring the ARPA funds into play, or we could use it in there. I assume we wouldn't want to spend $100,000 out of that fund to do that. I don't know what, what there is available. But certainly, if we're gonna spend some of it, then that takes us backwards from the 81,665. The difference in the rent from option two to option four is about $800 a month, about $10,000 a year.
Right. And I can tell you, and this doesn't answer or help you make your decision, but again, I've been doing this a long time, making long-term projections, looking out three, five, and 10 years. I've been doing that since I became director here. And I still feel very strongly that we need to pay a portion of it. Not worried about KDOC funding stopping, because I think that will never stop, but worried about other funding sources drying up. What I'm seeing in the federal government and some other things is, much like you just heard that whole presentation from the city, things are being shoveled around differently and things are expected to be gone differently. And I'm a little bit concerned about what, five, eight years down the road, federal funds and other things that we write multiple grants to and fund staff and facilities and other things, services for clients that keep them out of prison and jail, where's it gonna be? And my fear is, a little bit, and I don't want to alarm anybody from Community Corrections that's watching this. It's a small fear. But looking at trends and looking out as I do and make projections, three, five, and 10 years, I made my decision and came with that first decision based on that. And that's my experience. Right, wrong, or indifferent to how anybody on this commission feels, that's what I do. And so I would encourage that you at least allow Community Corrections to pay a portion. If you're absolutely not comfortable as a commission to do that, I respect that. But that is my own position.
Well, historically, it seems like legislators always look for another pocket to get money out of. And if you have this rainy day fund set aside, it continues to grow. The, the attempt might come that they say, well, look, they've got this little pot of money. We can cut back funding, they can fund it out of that. If we, if we go with option one, it still leaves you with a cushion. Still leaves you with some dollars to work with. But it also shows that, that you're using that in the manner that, that it should be. And it's serving a purpose and saving money down the road.
And I, and I understand that. So, and that's how I look at it, is that I'm confident that our reimbursements will pick up on the adult side. And it's not the same on the juvenile side. We've got about 200 and some thousand on our juvenile side. They just aren't able to return. But as our population increases, which I'm not seeing any stop of that, we unfortunately are not increasing in staffing costs and those kind of things. And so as our population increases, those return funds keep coming into us because they're reimbursing on the UAs and the facility and the things we've allotted to them. So I get a little confused, Commissioner Reese, but I think we're thinking the same a little bit on that. Should they come in, and I've given you the example years and years ago, scared me to death as a new director, sat there and saw, it's three secretaries of DOC ago, sit at a table and say, everybody submitted your, how you'll use your reimbursements budgets. That's a requirement, it's in the statute. We have to submit a reimbursement budget, how we would have spent it if the whole world collapsed, basically. And one director did not get it in, and I don't know what the deal was, but Johnson County. And DOC said, you didn't submit it, so we're gonna hold on to it till next year. Now, they didn't spend it and he got it back the next year. But, you know, you do your job and you do what you're supposed to do. Almost 35 years has told me that you do okay, but. But, that doesn't, that's not an endorsement for DOC. I'm not up here ever gonna endorse KDOC.
Okay. Other commissioners?
I, I've done some quick math here on what this would cost us annually for each option. And option one is $156,000, plus a little. And option two is 162,000. Option three is 166,000. And option four is 172,000. So that's incrementally, it goes up 6,000, then 4,000, then 6,000. Now, what does that mean? I don't know. You'd need a, an auditor, an accountant, a CPA, a banker, somebody, to tell me which one of those is the best, you know, for our bang, for our buck. I mean, obviously, we're gonna do something.
Right.
Which one's the right one? That's where I'm lost.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the expenditure of $81,665 in reimbursement dollars to cover the pre-trial remodeling.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Before we move on that, is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment? Any commissioners with comment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Annie. Okay. Go to action item. Number two.
RFA 109-22 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant Application with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of the local emergency planning committee to request the signature and the approval to submit four applications for the 2022 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. I will give you just a little brief background on the four different grants. One of them is requested by Slayton County Rural Fire District Five. They wish to purchase five Connex boxes to utilize in a simulation for a hazardous material semi-truck trailer incident. Currently, Rural Fire has seen an uptick in new volunteers with minimal experience to responding to hazmat situations on the interstate. We wanted to be able to give them a situation where they could train on this and get more exposure than having to do that on the job. This project requests a total of $22,800. The second project was requested by the Salina Fire Department. They would like to send six technicians to the Regional Hazardous Materials Conference. While they're, there, they would be able to bring back some expertise and experience on current transportation and hazardous material incidents management techniques. Also utilize some different equipment. This project, they will cost roughly $12,625. Salina Fire has also included a second project. They would like to send four technicians to receive ray training. Last year, through the 2020 Hazardous Materials Grant, I'm sure you guys remember the amount of project changes. I had to go through that due to COVID and training not being offered. They were able to purchase some, some ray equipment. Now, we would like to give them the ability to receive two-year factory certification, so they're able to repair and troubleshoot their own equipment. That project will cost $10,750. The fourth project that was submitted was submitted by the Salina Police Department. Their UAV team would like to support the Salina Fire Department on their hazardous materials calls by purchasing a H20T thermal sensor. This sensor would allow them to identify the contents in rail train levels. That would also allow them the ability to identify what placers are on semi-trucks and rail cars from a safe distance while the hazmat team deploys, also allowing them to set up a containment zone a little bit quicker. The breakdowns for these are, require a 20 and 80 match. For the fire department, they have used a soft match. They will use salary-infringed benefits to cover that 20%, while the Salina Fire depart, pardon me, while the Rural Fire District and the Salina Police Department are using a hard match to cover the remaining match for those projects. Do you have any questions?
On, the four applications consist of purchasing five Connex boxes. I assume those are the big semi-trailer boxes?
Yes and no. So, two of them will be 40-foot, and three of them will be 20-foot. And essentially, the material used in a Connex box and the material used in a semi-truck trailer are a little bit different. So, with purchasing the Connex boxes, yes, we would use them for hazardous materials training, but we'd also be able to utilize them from some other fire training afterwards as well.
And that would have been my question, because I know they rent these things pretty economically, really. And number two, where would we store them? Those, I mean, those are big.
Salina Fire, and Fire District Five have collaborated on a couple places that they would utilize. Last I heard, that Turner would like to store them out at Station Five and have it available for all of the Rural Fire Districts.
I'd like to know where they're gonna store them at Station Five, because the county stores their road graders there and, and other equipment from time to time. And I don't, I don't, maybe, I don't know where they'd put them.
Well, they do have some time to iron that out. Once these are submitted today, I will not get an answer on whether those projects have been approved until August. And the funds do not get released until September.
And based on the fact that these are grants, there is a 20% match from the county?
For District Five?
Well, you're just saying the county budget. These grants require an 80/20 match.
Yes, and each entity is responsible for their 20%.
The county is?
Each entity. So, for Rural Fire, their 20% hard match will be coming out of their donation line item.
Okay.
Quick question here, Michelle. Is under the, the ray certificate, certification for those deal, we only, we spend that much money, but though, for two-year factory certification, would we, do they have this testing every year or every so often?
Is this training offered?
Yes.
Yes, and it's offered in different places and countries. This is just for the closest one that would be available down in Oklahoma at the end of the year.
Okay, are we, since that's only good for two years, I mean, this, that certification, I mean, would we be better off staggering them every two years that somebody else goes and gets, instead of sending four at one time?
Our goal is that this would be a repetitive project, that they would continue to apply through the Hazardous Materials Grant Program. This is a grant that's not heavily utilized throughout the state. The funds come from the Department of Transportation, but to be honest, not many counties actually apply for it. So, we have been encouraged to put forth as many projects as we could this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and as the conference in, for the hazmat level operators, they need CEUs every, every year to stay certified and such. So, that's just helping keep their certification up.
Correct.
And they're all part of the regional team, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, entertain any action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the grant applications as presented in RFA number 109-22.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the, questions from the public? Sorry, I keep forgetting to do that. If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving RFA 109-22 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried five zero. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three.
RFA 110-22 Excavator Replacement with Darren Fishel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
How are you today?
Good.
This RFA is to consider purchase of a used excavator to replace the John Deere that was destroyed in a fire last year. We would like to purchase an excavator under the Slayton County Policy 4032, exemptions to competitive purchases. This policy states that when it is in the best interest of the county, used equipment may be purchased directly from the owner or their representative of the used equipment. The price shall be determined by negotiation. We have located a suitable replacement at Berry Tractor in Topeka, Kansas. It is a Volvo ECR 145 with 1,930 hours. Sale price is $125,000 with a 30-day warranty, and their option to purchase the machine back. I'll add a little bit there. Should it break or there be some significant damage, they, they would have the option to purchase the machine back instead of repair it. The alternatives for action would be to accept the negotiated price from Berry Tractor in the amount of $125,000. Two, set specs and take bids on a new excavator. Three, direct staff to an alternative action. The staff recommends the purchase of the used excavator from Berry Tractor in the amount of $125,000. This machine is used by the rural patrolmen for culvert replacement and ditch work, and by the work crews when the machine that they would normally use is under repair. It has low hours and is available. The new and used equipment market is currently suffering from shortage. We feel it is better to purchase from a dealer instead of an auction house. Letting, letting a machine out to bid puts it in a one-year timeframe for possession. The smaller machine allows us to fully utilize all of our haul equipment when responding to flooding by retrieving material from the ditches. The budget impact is the Roden Bridge Special Equipment Fund. Currently has an unencumbered balance of $1,808,243.75. We recently had a Purple Wave auction of used equipment that netted $61,541 to be placed in the Special Equipment Fund. This plus the $58,000 from the insurance company will cover almost all of the cost. This is, was part of the intended use of the Special Equipment Fund, when it was created for unexpected and emergency purchases such as this. This will leave the Special Equipment Fund with a balance of $1,683,243.75.
Darren, was the, the John Deere was, that, that was destroyed, was it the same size? I mean, was that a smaller piece of equipment?
These two pieces are, if you look at the pictures, the one that we're purchasing looks smaller, but it is just a different design. This one, the one that we're purchasing is what they call a zero tail swing. So it has the weight in the middle instead of out on, counterweight on on the end like the other ones.
Gotcha.
Which is a benefit, actually, that you don't have swinging into traffic.
Darren, approximately, what would a new one cost?
You know, a new one, you're looking, well, we just purchased one that was just a little bit larger, and I think was $225,000 or something like that. So, I'm gonna, I'm guesstimating here, but I'm thinking $185,000, $190,000. This also comes with a thumb and, and three buckets.
Darren, the $1,808,000 that you currently have in that budget, that, that includes the $61,000 from the auction and the $58,000 from the insurance?
No, that has not been deposited at the count when I wrote this RFA. So, you see what I mean? We just received those funds, and, and when they get deposited, they haven't quite cleared yet.
Why then is your Special Equipment Fund balance will be $1,608,000, when it's actually at, and I'm doing the math here, and that...
That's a clerical error on my part. If you were to add, if I should have took the six, the fif, I should have added those two to the current budget and then subtracted it. The Special Equipment Fund actually probably has more than that 1.8 in there.
Okay, you're telling me, then, that the $1,683 does not reflect the $61,000 or the $58,000 yet?
Correct. I believe that's, that's, that's correct, Jim.
Okay. So, with the auction equipment and the insurance, you're 100 and, what, $109,000 of that, $125,000?
Correct.
Thank you.
And Darren, is, is the Volvo here, I mean, it's, it's a piece that we're buying from Berry Equipment, but do they service these equipments? I mean, do they have the parts available if something would happen?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Did the insurance company take possession of the burned unit?
It is theirs. It is still out at our facility right now.
Okay. But it's theirs to dispose of?
Yes.
So any salvage will be theirs?
Correct.
So with, with the insurance money and the Purple Wave money, we're essentially paying for this thing, because it's $119,000, I think, is what, what it amounts to.
Correct.
So, but, for a few more, we could buy a new one. But, I'll take your judgment on that, that we need the used one.
Sure. You know, I feel in, in the role that this piece of equipment, because it is a good used piece of equipment, and the role that it's in, I believe a, a used piece of equipment is, is a solid value for our department.
And, and it's readily available.
Yes, yes.
So, if you went out for bids or whatever on new equipment, you could be six, nine months out.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Now, is this like Annie? You're telling us it's already set in your, your deal out here? I'm sorry, you guys, but we've already got it.
It is. It, it's available. Just kidding.
Any other commissioners have comment, questions? Anyone in the public with comment or question? Yeah, if not, I'll entertain any action from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the negotiated price from Berry Tractor in the amount of $125,000 as presented by staff in RFA 110-22.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we approve RFA 110-22 Excavator Replacement? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before you leave, Darren, if I could, as we talked with Michelle just a second ago, Rural Fire District Number Five, where we store our graders, that is their property, not the county's property? Is that, am I correct there, or which, which way, who owns that?
You know, I couldn't tell you who owns it. I believe Slayton County owns the property. I do know they have more than beyond just the motor grader pad. There is, there is, they do own more.
Okay, I know in that south terminal, they've got that south building. They've also got a little land around there, too, so.
To the east, they have more, more ground going that way.
You're talking about the one at Simpson Road and 040?
Yes, yes, there is more property there.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me.
No, that's fine. Take advantage of them when we have them up here, huh? Item number four.
RFA 111-22 Livestock and Expo Center Change Order with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. Back on December 7th, the commission awarded bids to Heineken Electric for Ag Hall and Barn One for all of the different electrical upgrades in those facilities, for a total amount of $250,992. When we began the installation of the steel frames and kind of really lining out where it was that we were putting all the electrical switches, it was kind of determined, a little bit of oversight on our part, that we really needed to add two additional switches, as well as some additional wiring to facilitate some better lighting at nighttime. So that resulted in a potential change order cost in the amount of $3,410. So this request for action is for approval of the change order. This would add two additional switches to Barn One. And what that will do is allow for five different bays to be controlled by lighting switches, which will help kind of, will help the staff there determine, do we need the whole building lit up, or do we only need portions of it lit up? And then also the additional wiring that is needed to install some lighting that will be assisted in the nighttime hours. The budget impact piece of it is a total of $1,707,000 has been earmarked in CIP for the livestock and Expo Center improvements, and a total of $1,79,552 has been spent or has been committed for the different improvements, leaving $627,447. thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. So this would still allow for us to have funds available for other planned upgrades and the project management services.
Would this be covered in a contingency fund whatsoever?
So what we have discussed moving forward is when we brought the request for action to approve the bids, we did not put any contingency funds in there or did not put any request for action to allow for staff to be able to accept those change orders. Moving forward with the other projects, we will definitely do that.
This change, if you will, is initiated by Expo Center or is it initiated by Heineken?
No, it would have been by the Expo Center staff, just from a practicality standpoint when they really got to looking at the uses of that barn.
Any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain some action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the change order with Heineken Electric in the amount of three thousand four hundred and ten dollars as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve RFA one 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 dash twenty-two livestock and expo center change order. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. I will now move into informational items.
County Appraiser update with Sean Robertson, County Appraiser.
Good morning, Sean.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to skip a little bit out of order from the update that you have in front of. You want to start with our budget update for 2021. You know, I've always kind of prided myself in our office in being efficient and, you know, following a good budget. In fact, our expenditures for 2021 were a grand total of two point five percent, only two point five percent above what they were in 2010. So we've, you know, two and a half percent increase in expenditures over eleven years. I don't think I'm going out on a limb saying that there's no other department that could say that. And for 2021, our expenditures were sixty-eight thousand dollars under budget. At first glance, that may seem good. However, in setting a budget, I've always taken the approach that our budget is the minimum amount of money that we need in order to accomplish the job that we need to do. And the fact that our expenditures were sixty-eight thousand under that means we were not maybe able to do everything that we should and need to do. That has all stemmed from being short-staffed. Short-staffed from not having the people, then not being able to have people go out in the field in order to accommodate the public in here means less in mileage paid, less in sending people to classes. So I just want to explain that sixty-eight thousand under budget on the surface seems great, but there's some underlying problems that we may need to address to take care of that. But anyway, besides that, in the last six months, we have set up our online personal property filing. This is something that we had talked about for the last couple of years. Instead of mailing out several big pieces of paper and having people do those by hand, bring them or mail them into our office, we sent out postcards. They're able to go online and do their personal property filing online. That saved us a lot in mailing costs. They still have the opportunity to come into our office. We can print those forms out and fill them out at the counter. So that has worked out pretty well. Also, each year we receive a compliance evaluation from Property Evaluation Division of Kador. For this past year, we were in what's called substantial compliance. We received, it's not really a percentage, but it is a score of ninety-four out of a hundred, you need seventy-five to be in compliance. We really are one of the best in the state at what we do and that score shows that. So coming up, it's kind of fortuitous that I'm speaking on the same day that Lauren Driscoll was because some of the things that I want to talk about piggyback on what she had to say. So coming up later this month, hopefully on February twenty-fourth, we will be mailing out the real estate value notices for 2022. And people will see, you know, their new values for 22 and go back to part of what Lauren talked about and remedial high school economics class. When demand is high and the supply is low, then the prices go up. And that's what's happening in our housing market. It's not just ours, it's all across the state and in some way all across the country. So if prices are rising, values also will be because we just follow the market. So once people receive those notices, we will be conducting informal meetings with people that have questions through March and April. We are more than happy to explain the process. I think in many years past, it's been kind of a confrontational type of experience for some taxpayers. I think over the last several years, we have done a very good job of making it less so and making it a learning experience and explaining what's going on. So we'll continue that. We make it as expedient for taxpayers as possible. Only takes about fifteen minutes generally by phone and we can exchange some information that way. I do want you and the public to understand, I use this quite a bit with real estate, the stock market analogy, just because if the stock market goes up ten percent, that doesn't mean every single sector of stocks or every single stock goes up exactly ten percent. Same thing can be said for the real estate market. If the real estate market goes up ten percent, that doesn't mean everything in the north end of Salina went up ten percent or everything on the east side went up ten percent. Those numbers for that general area could be different. And then you break it down to an individual property, it does not necessarily follow the whole. So I just want to get that out there. And also, one thing that has been misunderstood by public and, to be quite honest, taxing entities in the past, although I think this group has a very good handle on it, is property taxes are different from income and sales tax in that they are not rate-driven. Income tax is, there may be some brackets, but essentially there is a rate applied to your income. Sales tax, there is a rate that's applied to how much you spend. So if you spend more, you pay more in sales tax. If you earn more, you pay more in income tax. Value and property tax are budget-driven. That rate changes based on the budget and the total value. So value does not equal tax in the property tax world. Value equals the portion of the pie of the property taxes that owner would pay. So once we get through that process, we'll certify values hopefully by the end of May. One of the things that I've been working on recently, looking forward toward that date is, as you know and Lauren had talked about before this morning, is some IRB issuances. Those are eligible for a property tax exemption through the IRB process. There's a couple of those that should be taking effect this year. They have not filed the paperwork yet, so I've been prodding them along to get that done because the Board of Tax Appeals is actually the only one that can grant that exemption, but I believe that that's in the process now. So we'll be, get all of that wrapped up and taken care of. So, any questions?
I have one question that maybe you can help me with. If Salina, Celine County adds eighteen hundred properties in a short order, two, three, four years, what in your professional estimation would happen to the value of properties?
Well, right now, we're seeing an escalation in value because of that low supply. Now, I'm certainly not saying that once that supply side is met, that values would drop, but I think that the increase in values would level off some just from an economic standpoint. That has to be the case. I also would mention, and I think Lauren did a good job of mentioning earlier too, in the adding of a lot of these properties, where they are going are generally ag properties or the one Holodome, Ramada, Embassy, whatever the iteration is, has been, you know, really knocked down as far as values and property taxes that they are contributing. So those places that they're looking to put those in, there really is no, no big property tax contribution that those are making now. And if those projects did not go forward and those properties were left as is, there really wouldn't be any benefit. So when you're talking about a ten-year exemption possibly on all of these, the county or any taxing entity involved is really not giving up anything in order to get the benefit of, like we talked about, the sales tax and those other benefits of having those properties.
Shh, we want the city to think we're giving up a lot, Sean.
All right, any other questions, Ashawn?
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Leave her on item two.
Item two, I'm sorry, Jason.
It's kind of right at the bottom. I almost overlooked it as well. The Health Department update with Jason Tiller, Director.
Welcome, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Sorry about that. You've been waiting patiently.
It is the morning, right? Yeah. All right, if you want to go ahead and pull up the chart, please, Lauren. So I would start with, let him get that up. All right, so I will start with ours with just a little bit of an update on COVID. Over the last few months, of course, we have dealt with really a Delta and Omicron-filled surge of cases that had resulted in actually being over thirty-five hundred cases in the month of January with eleven deaths. With that, you can see just on what I have up here, I've been keeping this for quite a long time and to be honest, I never thought I would start adding a year three column to these months of case counts. But over time, you can see in the orange columns, which are the 2021, I had to check my, I can't necessarily see the numbers from here. Thankfully, I have my own here so I can read what I have there. But you can see for those that we are, you know, we've saw a significant increase or a pretty steady increase into December. And then when January, end of December, really, end of January, which is now the green for 2022, we saw a huge spike in that number. And then now, as we'll see in a couple of other ones here in a minute, we have seen almost as dramatic of a trend of coming down off of that, which is similar trend in most places. Couple of things I want to point out here, just as footnotes. Couple of days ago, we had, it was February sixth, two years ago, February sixth, 2020, we had our first community planning meeting for the, what was still then called novel coronavirus, hadn't even been given a name yet. I think if any of us had suggested two years ago that we would still be doing this and be looking at a year three, I don't think anybody would have believed that at that point. But yet, here we are. Next slide, please. So this just gives you a look at how the deaths have progressed per month and then now, you know, comparing the years. So yellow columns, of course, 2020, December was our worst month when it came to deaths, December of 2020. 2021 was much better in terms of the rounding out the end of the year. And then starting out 2022, still looked better than December. And so far this month, we have had four deaths in the month of February. And then the last slide, please, Lauren. So this is not exactly apples to apples. When I took what KDHE has on their website and what we have on our dashboard, partially because the chart that they had on their dashboard for the cases per day was compressed from the beginning or practically from, I think, from the beginning of the pandemic till now. And it was, the columns and everything were so tight and small that when I tried to reduce it some to put it on a slide, it was really hard to see. This one, though, shows the seven-day rolling average. And then ours is cases day-to-day for approximately similar time periods. The links are below these slides, so if anybody wants to go and look at it in more in depth. What I wanted to point out, though, is even with the seven-day rolling average or our case counts day-to-day, you are seeing that trend of where it looks like we, in retrospect, had peaked about middle or so of January and then the trend has showed a steady decrease in the amount of cases since then. So additionally, in the last, over the last month, we have, along with most places, stopped conducting contact tracing as part of our steps of moving from pandemic to endemic. Partially, our original thoughts that were at, you know, with that many cases, investigations were almost impossible to keep up with, let alone trying to identify and get a hold of their contacts. And it was during that time when we were having those conversations internally that the state also announced that they were going to be stopping contact tracing across the board. On February first, we, along with about two-thirds of the other counties, also began to transition our case investigations to KDHE. Since February first, most of our cases are being sent to their larger case investigation force, which they took everybody that was doing contact tracing before and then on February first, rolled them over into doing case investigations. Subsequently, at about the same time that all of this was happening, those trends were really showing that continued decrease. So that transition over this last week has proved to probably be one of the smoother transitions or operations with KDHE since the beginning of this pandemic. There are cases that we are receiving from other reporting agencies that may not be in the state EpiTrak system, so we are still constantly doing quality assurance to make sure that those reports are getting into the system so that they do get investigated. WIC completed their biannual audit in October with no major issues. At this point, they are, should be back to full in-person appointments coming up in July of 2022. As many things have been forced into some improvements, I guess you could say, during the pandemic, one of those has been also that now WIC users can use self-checkout systems at places like Dylan's and Walmart in order to be able to use their WIC benefits. And there has been an increase in the benefit for fresh fruits and vegetables. Childcare licensing in conjunction with PACE and the DOTS, or excuse me, Connecting the DOTS Community Task Force has been making strides in trying to increase the childcare workforce in the community. They've also seen an increase in those wanting They've also seen an increase in those wanting to open childcare locations, whether they are in-home or center-type locations. And in fact, we've had some new facilities, one of them a school age program, one preschool, and six new childcare homes that have opened. And then there are currently a childcare center and six other childcare homes that are pending their license applications. Home Health completed a two-day intensive mock CMS or Centers for Medicare study survey in preparation for their actual survey, which was actually due in 2021, but due to the pandemic, like many things, it has been deferred, but those are usually unannounced. And so they'll be working through some additional suggestions that were made as part of that survey, including because they had switched over, or CMS had switched over to a different payer model, and then there were some other regulation changes. In the last couple of months, I have to commend them that they also maintained a high level of service and care despite having some staff turnover and then staff that were left impacted by COVID and other illness. And so just through continuous dedication to service, they still were able to see the majority of their patients and make sure that all care was rendered. So in the next few months, or the next couple of months, really, we will be continuing to work on demobilizing some of our local COVID response. That will continue until, as far as the transition of cases, until we are sure that all reporting is being accurately captured by KDHE, closing out all our records and documentation. Starting in the next few weeks, we'll be scaling back some of our reporting. Instead of the three times a week, we'll be looking at probably once a week. And then as things progress and, and other changes occur, even probably less than that over the next few weeks. Of course, ongoing monitoring of the situation, because if the last two years have taught us anything, you can't predict what COVID is going to do. And to do so, I think would try, would put you in a bad place that you have to try and then play a significant amount of catch-up. So we'll be monitoring everything that's going on and hoping for the best, but also still preparing for the worst if it should happen. Our aid to local grant applications are being completed right now, and those are due mid-March. We continue to try and hire positions for professionals in our WIC, Childcare, Home Health Administration. And at the second half of last year, we were engaged in some projects with KU around strategic planning and developing a Rural Public Health Fellowship, which had to be put on the back burner due to the increase of COVID cases from Delta and then later Omicron. And so in the next few, next couple of months, we will be working on re-engaging those projects for the development and, and looking down the road at the next three to five years post-COVID. Looking at our budget, we are still doing well as far as the expenses for the first period of this year. Our revenue has outpaced that. Quite a bit of that is from, of course, COVID grant funding and then in our other revenue streams for fee-for-service insurance, reimbursements, and so forth. And with that, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
My only question is the $382,000. I mean, is that just an ongoing perpetual budget inflow or?
In that first period last year, we had, if I remember right, there was a lot of grant funding that came in, plus we were also starting to get reimbursement for vaccines that we were given during that first month.
So, so in a, in a profit-loss world, that doesn't mean necessarily that you made 382,000 bucks?
No. That's just, you know, purely the snapshot at that point of where our, our budget was at at the end of that moment.
And that money will be captivated sometime during the year and spent and.
Right.
Well, you've had a tough job, buddy. That's all I, you and your whole staff, and I, for one, really appreciate the effort that, that Celine County Health Department has put forward and, and cooperation with the hospitals and the doctors and everybody else. And your efforts, your efforts, while they may, may not get a pat on the back every day for sure, they sure don't go unnoticed with me anyway. And thank you for your, your help, your service, and the things that you, you and your department do.
I appreciate that. And I have to say that it has always been, and I, when the opportunity arises, I always bring this up, that it has been the relationships that we have had in this room with the city and the county, with the hospital, the FQHC, the, everybody that has made what we have done to this point be successful. Where so many counties were consistently having struggles, we showed what true partnership during a disaster looks like here in Celine County. So, and I thank you for your support.
It's good leaders that get us there, and you did.
I too applaud your past performances through all of this, and hopefully that it will be behind us.
I hope in that too, sir.
One question, you have a guest with you.
Yes.
Would you want to introduce?
This is Ashley Swanson. She came on in December. She is our new Deputy Director and Finance Officer. I wanted to introduce her for one, so that if something happens to me, then Phil and everybody else will be looking to her for direction and, and leading the Health Department. But also, I brought her today so that she could get a feel for how the commission meetings work, and she got a, I think, the full experience. With everything that, that can go on in a commission meeting.
Yes.
So she's the one that we can pat on the back for this 382,000 bucks, huh?
Well, she, you can pat her on the back for the 91,509 for 2022. The 382 would have been previous staff, but yeah.
You still get a pat on the back, just not as big a one then.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you, Ashley, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jason? Thank you for your time, Jason.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioners. Have a good day.
Hey, now we can go to item number three.
Livestock and Expo Center project update with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Welcome back, Hannah.
Good morning again. Have any of you been by the Expo Center lately? Some absolutely wonderful, amazing changes that have been occurring there. So we thought, along with the change order request for action, today was also a really good time to give you a quick update on the project and where everything is at. I also have our project manager, Justin May, from Hutton with us today. So just in case you happen to have any questions for him, we can bring him up as well. But Lauren, if you wouldn't mind bringing up some of my pictures. So just want to kind of go through some of the things that have, has taken place so far. And this is a picture of Ag Hall. And so this is when all of the exterior doors had all been removed and the new ones have been put in place. All of them have been prepped, and if I'm not mistaken, they're probably going to be close to be, getting close to paint here before too terribly long. But those have definitely been a nice welcome addition to, to the building itself, as well as the lower section has been painted the gray color. Next slide. Here's just a close-up of the doors itself. All of the different new locking mechanisms have been put on there, as well as whatever safety features that was needed for those, those particular doors. Next slide. This is probably my favorite part so far for the last couple of weeks, besides the concrete, is the windows. The windows have shown up and they have begun to be installed. This is a picture of two of the windows would be kind of like on the south, south side of the, of Ag Hall. But if I do say so myself, I think they look pretty darn nice, pretty darn nice. But those window installations will continue. This is actually a really nice thing to see. We were not expecting the windows to come in until like probably sometime in March, and they actually showed up a little bit early. So that was very, very nice to see. Next slide. Now let's move on to the concrete work. So that's probably one of the biggest changes that has physically happened at the location. This is outside of Ag Hall. This was actually taken last week, where the forming outside, just right outside of Ag Hall has occurred and the colored concrete has been poured. And then obviously, the, the prep work and the groundwork in front of Ag Hall for the concrete to be poured there, and that is happening this week. Next slide. This is the concrete over by the loading dock area, so that has been poured and complete. We did find a couple of, couple of little different areas after the concrete was poured that needs some attention later on, but for the most part, this particular, this particular section of the Expo Center has been completely poured with concrete. Next slide. This is the other extension area of the loading dock extending over into barn two, barn one area. Next slide. And this is the prep work of all of the concrete being poured in front of barn one, as well as in front of the office area. The other thing that was poured is the section of the colored concrete sidewalk, and I think that's on the next slide, if I'm not mistaken. Yep. Picture of the colored concrete that was poured in front of barn one, and all of that has been poured and extended out. And next slide. And then the electrical upgrades. So all of the steel has been installed inside of barn one in preparation for the installation of the big fans that will go there. And then, of course, your approval of the change order today to add the electrical outlets inside there. So they've also been doing some work inside of Ag Hall, too. I don't have any pictures of the electrical work there, but definitely things are moving right along. I think that might be the last slide. Yep. So moving forward, some of the other things that have been done is that we did do a structural evaluation on barns three, five, and six. We got that report back that did indicate that there really wasn't any type of major structural deficiencies. So we are working with Hutton and trying to develop a plan for the reskidding of those particular barns, as well as the major electrical things that need to happen in those barns. So that'll be kind of a next phased project moving forward. We are also working on kind of making some adjustments. So we have a phased plan, and we've worked through a pretty good chunk of those, really kind of evaluating the, the agreement things that we had with the City of Salina and getting a lot of that stuff knocked out this first kind of year. But then also mirroring that up with some of the functional things, so really trying to find a good balance between the aesthetic and as well as the functional things for the facility. We've had some challenges with trying to make sure that we can get projects complete in preparation for some of the big shows that David and his staff go on. Biggest one is Equafest, so Justin can attest, we've definitely been pushing quite a bit to make sure that that concrete gets done in time for Equafest, as well as the farm show that's coming up at the end of March. So we definitely have some other projects that are going to be coming forth to the commission, probably within the next couple of months. We want to see a good portion of this concrete work and the electrical work get done first. But definitely behind the scenes, we are working, working on the next part. So subject to any questions that you have, or any questions for myself or Justin?
Schedule-wise, Phase One, and we started that last, what, October before that even? And as far as the schedule goes, when do you anticipate that that'll be completed?
We've had a couple of hiccups, a lot of it just with supply chain issues. Probably the biggest thing is the windows and everything. Like, it seems like everything's kind of catching up, so we're probably a good, I don't know, three or four months behind on the Phase One piece of it. But we also did move some stuff around, so we had some stuff slated in Phase Two, such as the electrical upgrades in, in barn one, that we actually moved up to Phase One instead of doing Phase Two, so.
Were we allowing approximately a year, if I remember right, for Phase One to be completed?
Correct.
So do you anticipate that that will be accomplished?
A few months behind, but yes, it will be accomplished. Yes.
Question, Hannah, there was, when I walked there the other day, I, I noticed the, the concrete pour between the maintenance and the, and the expo out at the street level, where there seemed to be a drop-off there. Has that been addressed and, and repairs being made or?
Yes, that is one thing. When we noticed that particular issue, both myself and Phil met up with Justin out of the site to take a look at that. And Justin and his crews and staff, they've got plans to make sure that that gets corrected.
And the, the expo will be ready for, for Equafest. Work will just stop for a few days there. What windows are in are in, and then they'll hold off, and once Expo, or Equafest is over, they'll come in and continue work? Is that?
That is the plan. That is definitely the plan. Justin and his crew have been really good about understanding the, the schedule, also understanding the needs of the facility. So they're aware, it's, it's a big show, lots of activity for a few days, so we can just hang out for a little bit and then get back in.
We're getting into their busy season, too.
Correct.
Spring and summer comes, so.
Right.
Trying to hit the target date and also work around all the events is going to be just a little challenging, I'm sure.
It most certainly has been, but that's a good thing. We've got some really good communication going on between ourselves and, and Hutton and then the subcontractors, so we'll make it happen.
And I'm sure Justin could put in some 12, 16-hour days, too. Any other questions of Hannah on the expo update?
Thank you, Hannah. We'll move on to item number four.
Jail project update with Philip Smith, Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Well, you're just getting it full, full barrel today.
A big one.
Moving from one major project to another, in, in view of the time, I'll cut this a little short, you all have received a written copy of project status with some photographs. And I want to thank Colby Shepherd with Turner for providing those monthly books. And we'll have another one at the end of this month, be back in front of you March 8th. But I did just want to touch on a couple of things. I, I looked this morning of, you know, kind of where are we? You know, I'm a financial guy, and so I was looking at bond proceeds, and through the end of January, we had spent about 5.7% of the first bond proceeds, so 4,649,000 of that 81 million so far. Colby is supposed to be getting me some cash flow projection information today that I can share with the Treasurer's Office to make sure that we have funds in, in Bennington State when we need them, because of course, we've been putting some of the investment piece of that into the municipal investment pool. The other thing is, as mentioned previously, continuing to work on easements. The city attorney and Mike Montoya have, I think, come to a meeting of the minds on the easement for the drainage and should be getting some language to us momentarily, and that has satisfied the Planning Department, and so they have released the building permit, and we just need to finish up that easement language before we get certificate of occupancy. So I think those things have all gone well. The other thing that I will say that has happened since the project update, which is through the end of January, is that we have gone out on site. Actually, the sheriff has been on site a couple of times to look at a plywood mockup of one of the typical cells, and they've, we've made some adjustments, and this is exactly why they do these mockups. The, the seats were a little too close to the table, so it was hard for people to get in and out, and so they've moved those seats by a couple of inches. They've also looked at installing a bar, a non-ligature grab bar. They've also looked at installing a bar, a non-legature grab bar in order to facilitate folks getting up to the top bunk. So how, you know, you can design all this stuff in a, you know, on a piece of paper or even walk through it electronically, but seeing it in person and being able to touch it and sit on it, there's some real value in that. So happy that we've gotten through that stage. Won't belabor any of the other points that were in the written materials, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the county administrator.
Just a quick question and I, I remember, I think there was a deal that come out on some issues with the concrete. Has any of that been resolved on the structural of the integrity of the concrete?
Yes, so there, as the commission, as, as everyone is aware, it's been cold until this week. And so it's always a challenge to pour concrete when it is very, very cold. And so there was, we, we have somebody who is engaged to do testing of the concrete pours and a couple of their core samples came back with some issues. So they're waiting for the full 28-day curing period, which will be later this month, to see whether the samples really reflect the, the structure. They're hopeful that it does not, that the sample, they, they think maybe the samples were stored incorrectly and that's what caused the breakage. If that's the case, then we're good to go forward. If not, there's the potential to have to repour some of it, but we should know that later this month.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
All right. We now go on to item number five.
Commissioners comments.
Any comments from the commission?
Nope. All good.
Hearing none, we'll go on to item number six.
Announcements.
Hearing none, we'll enter into a study session now. Item number one.
Department of Senior Services Advisory Council expression of interest forms.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Rosie.
We have, I'm sorry, what?
Good morning.
Oh, good morning. We have a vacancy on our board right now. And I have four different expression of interest that I'm going to go over with you. And I'll just do them in order as they're listed. The first one, her name is Shanna Aneas. She is an employee of Baker Test Cut, but she does deliver meals on wheels for us. And I have no problem with any of these. The second one, Christopher Dancy, he is a CPA retired. He is a frequent patron of ours. The third one, Donald Merriman, he is a retired county clerk. And the last one that you have is Rita Deister. And you guys have actually already approved Rita to be on our board right now. So that really leaves us with three.
Rosie, I think those last two are mine, not yours.
Give them back, Rosie.
Donald Merriman and Rita Deister are for the 28th judicial nominating.
Okay. Well, that leaves me with two. Shanna Aneas.
And again, one opening.
And Christopher Dancy. Did you have any questions about either one of those?
You're talking of filling one opening?
I have one opening right, right now. The opening that I have is, the term expires January 2024. This person that I have recently passed away, so creating this vacancy. He was actually filling in for another volunteer on our advisory board, our council.
I'm not sure what format.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to weigh in for a second and say that I don't know either of these people, but the fact that they're involved with the senior services department makes me say either one is okay with me. I, I don't know if anyone can say yes or no in terms of they know the person or can, can vouch for them. I'm sure they're both qualified. Looks like their, their past history as far as working is satisfactory. And the fact that, like I said, they're both involved currently with, with delivering meals on wheels and helping out over there. So looks to me like we've got the best of both worlds here, only we only have one position instead of two.
Hmm.
So I'll look to someone else that maybe might know these people.
I don't know them, but do you have a recommendation, Rosie?
Well, our advisory council meets February 18th. So I would probably just recommend that, you know, we turn it over to the advisory council, let them study it and then make a recommendation to you.
Sounds good.
Works for me. Consensus there?
Yep.
Yep. Good with that?
Okay.
Pardon? You're good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I guess we'll bring it back to us after the advisory meeting on the 18th and hopefully there'll be a recommendation that comes out of that.
All right. There will be.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Item number two.
28 judicial or district judicial nominating commission expression of interest forms.
Well, Rosie stole my thunder a little bit, but we have two folks who have applied for this position, Don Merriman and Rita Deister. And as you may recall from my comments last week, we need to do this on an expedited basis. I need to bring back one of these folks for you to consider next week because the state needs a name next Tuesday. So again, I, I think we are blessed to have two very highly qualified folks with experience and I can't make a recommendation between those two individuals, but leave it to the commission for some direction.
I couldn't make a recommend, oh, I will make a recommendation, but it's not because of one being more qualified than the other. We have one of these members already serving, individual serving on a board and I don't believe is Don Merriman sitting on any board right now?
Planning commission.
Planning?
On the planning commission, yeah.
Well, it would be my recommendation. Both of them are quite qualified and both of them would do a great job, but I, I, I would recommend Don Merriman for the job.
I would probably agree with you and simply because of the reasons you've stated. I mean, Rita's already on the fair board, she's on the senior services. The, the board that Don's on doesn't meet all that often. They do meet, I mean, they're scheduled every month, but they don't always meet every month. I would like to take advantage of his expertise in this area. And it says here that he's, has helped in the judges in, in filing over the years. And I, I know he's heavily involved with Ambuck Civic Club and so forth. I don't want to use up Rita, you know, for, for volunteering, so. And I don't think she'd be offended if we choose Don. It's not like it's a popularity contest here, so I, I would be in favor of Don also on this one.
I agree from the cheap seats.
I, I would suggest the administrator prepare a resolution for next week with Don Merriman's name on it.
It, it looks like we concur on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the end of all our items.
Already?
Yeah, I know, I know it. I don't know what to do with the rest of my morning, but we'll figure out something. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we adjourn? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, we are adjourned.
Hallelujah.